Carolyn, how are you?
I'm good. I just, my face is not showing for some reason.
That's okay. We can hear you just fine. I just have a quick question for you. Since there's only a board of three, you have the legal option to continue this hearing, or you can continue with a three-member board, and I must give you that option.
So what is the normal number of board members?
Five.
So I would have to have all three?
Well, from a point of legality, you have the option to reschedule this hearing if it's only a board of three, because it is a five-member board. So legally, I have to give you that option. If you would like to continue this hearing, to have a more complete board, you may do so, or you may continue with the three-member board.
Did we know earlier that we were only going to have three members?
Yes.
And why weren't we informed in... So what, do we have to wait another month?
Correct. If you would like to reschedule, I'd be more than happy to do so. We have one member of the board who's on vacation. So really, right now, we only have four members of the board. I have people who have applied for A, a full-board position, and B, an alternate position. But the select board decided to have that as an open enrollment for, I believe, sixty days.
Carolyn, I'd like to proceed.
You'd like to proceed?
Carolyn?
Well, you know, I wasn't at the other meetings, so unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the board members.
I'd like to proceed.
Oh, okay. If you want to proceed, go ahead.
Yep.
Would you like the boards to introduce themselves?
Can I just make a phone call quick?
Absolutely. Take your time.
I was just going to say, if three members, if the applicant's accepting of three members, she'd only have to have two of those votes. She wouldn't have to get all three.
Is that true?
That would be a majority, yes.
Okay.
What I would like to see is three members to the affirmative, that they all come to a decision together, but a majority would be two.
All right. Yeah, we'll go forward.
You want to move forward?
Sure. My name is Carolyn Parker. I don't know why you can't see me. I have a camera, and it's on. So basically, we're here to talk about the Tractor Supply Company and their facility, their building at 437 Route 125, Brentwood, New Hampshire. We had gone in front of the board previously, and we were approved to allow a second sign with a square footage of sixty-one point four-six square feet. Somewhere during the meeting or at the end of the meeting, there was a condition put on the decision which said that both wall signs could not be more than a hundred and twenty square feet in total. So I wasn't aware of that until I filed the building permit, and the building inspector said, "Well, you need to tell me that both these signs won't be more than a hundred and twenty feet, twenty square feet," and I'm like, "Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about." So that's when we found out that. So in hindsight, I probably should have given more information, which I will do in the future, to tell you what is currently on the property, which currently on the property is a six-by-eighteen wall sign that says Tractor Supply Company, which is a hundred and eight square feet. So if we were approved for the sixty-one point four-six, and we already have a hundred and eight, that would be a total of a hundred and sixty-nine point four-six. So where the condition of allowing a hundred and twenty square feet for both signs came in, we're not quite sure. So we now are asking for the board to approve the Garden Center sign at sixty-one point four-six square feet for a total site signage for walls of a hundred and sixty-nine point four-six. It's a very large building. The Garden Center is in addition, where it's going to have a roof over it, so it's a seasonal-type thing, where, you know, in the winter, you get your salts, you get your shovels, you get your other stuff. In the summer, you're going to get your garden supplies and everything like that. So it's in addition, in a sense, to the building. It's just not an enclosed building. Does anybody have any questions?
Would anyone like to see the signage on the building?
Yes, I'd like to see what you're proposing.
Lori, can you share that?
I can.
Can you show the tractor supply sign, main sign as well, or did you just have this?
Yeah, it's on the bottom of this drawing.
Yep.
So as you can see, the Tractor Supply sign that's currently there is in, you know, is a good-sized sign for the size of the building. And then the Garden Center is triangular to, you know, go in with the roofline of the proposed addition, which is, like I said, a not enclosed, but enclosed, you know what I mean? So we feel it's helping the people to know where to go, and, you know, instead of parking over here, and then you've got to walk all the way over there. You want to buy supplies, you want to park your car closer to the Garden Center and be in that area.
So I have a question. Currently, on the fencing of the Garden Center, there's a number of fabric signs that meet the definition of a sign in 400-03-02-03. With the addition of this sign, I would assume that all of the fabric signs on the fencing, if you were successful tonight, that all those fabric signs would be removed, and this would be the only sign that would indicate where the Garden Center is?
Correct.
You could use that in your list of conditions, if you wish.
Oh, we don't like those conditions. No, we can't. We would accept that one, though.
So where the town of Brentwood does not have a provision for a directional sign, this is strictly asked to be another wall-mounted sign only, not for a directional sign. Is that correct?
That's correct. So your bylaws allow for one wall sign up to a hundred and twenty square feet. So obviously, you know, when the permit was issued back in 2011, when it originally opened, they went for, you know, as much square footage as allowed at that time. Now, this Garden Center is, in a sense, in addition, so it's kind of making the building bigger. You know, you're still tall. Usually, a lot of towns do the, you are allowed ten percent of the square footage of, you know, the area of the building. So we feel that this additional square footage is not, you know, crazy to ask for, or is going to look awkward on the property.
And just as a side note, that structure kind of is set back. It's kind of hard to see, but it's set back from the frontage.
So the Tractor Supply sign, when I go by there late at night, that Tractor Supply sign is on, I think, throughout the night. Is it the intent that this Garden Center sign would also be on, or would this be, the illumination be brought down or turned off when the lights of the parking lot are actually reduced?
If that was something that you would request for us to get the approval, we would certainly set it up on a timer.
Yeah, a lot of times, signs go off about an hour after business is closed. But as you mentioned, the area parking lot, you know, signs, lights stay on, so that it's a safety issue. You know, so no one's going on the property, and people can see if they are.
Yes, and my first question would be, is this, is this building, it's a stretch to call it a building when it doesn't have any walls or a roof or anything right now, but is this, is this the entrance to this going to be to the parking lot, or is the entrance going to be in multiple places, or how are you going to do this?
Lori, the entrances, they are from the parking lot. I'm not sure. Lori, do they have a walkthrough on this one, or do you know?
It appears so. It looks like there is an awning there about halfway down. Some stores have an entrance between the two, some do not. I cannot confirm.
But it would be, it would be good to assume that you enter from the front, where the sign is.
Most cases, you do.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the intent.
You can see that it looks like a slide, it looks like a sliding gate that would open and close, and people would go in and out.
That's also where they load anything.
And just out of curiosity, how are you going to run your cashiering or tracking activity to make sure that you get paid for everything that goes out with more than one entrance or exit?
That's an operational issue that Tractor Supply has figured out how to manage very well, apparently, because this is typical of locations all over the country.
And I'm not going to try to use another name, but, you know, I'm, I don't have many of these in my area where I live, but we have your Home Depot, your Lowe's, and they have those Garden Centers, and they have separate registers, people entering and exiting, paying for plants and other stuff like that. So no one's going to be going in there and stealing stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I would like to be part of the discussion instead of asking a particular question. What do I mean by that, you say?
Yes, please expound, yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions for which I don't have an answer right now.
That's good.
Oh, oh, you. But, but if we have a discussion, I do have, I am, I do have an opinion.
Sure.
Is this the time to do that?
Absolutely.
Oh.
I can make a suggestion if you, if you would like.
Help me with all this procedures.
So eventually, we're going to get to the five criteria. I let you free-form a little bit. So that's why I gave you that sheet this evening. So what I would suggest is that you go down through one through five and talk amongst yourself about the five criteria, and come up with your own determination of what you believe the five criteria, if it meets the five, or if it doesn't. I think that might spur on some good conversation.
Well, if I can say this, that it did meet the five criteria previously until a condition was added. So I do want to put that out there, that we have already been approved for this sign. It was just a condition that changed, you know, what we were approved for, in a sense.
Right. So legally, what I need to do is I need to put their answers of the five criteria in your notice of decision. Was that an oversight on my part on your last one? Yes, it was. You were granted a rehearing, and I will not make that mistake again. So.
We don't want to be the learning curve.
No, we, no, we do not. That's why I printed that sheet out this evening, is that I need their answers to that, those five criteria, whatever those answers are, but I need to put them on the notice of decision.
Okay.
So Mark, I would, I'd like to hear from, if there's anybody in the public that has any comments on this also, because I think it sounds like our, the board, we've gone through, and we've asked our questions. So it would be good to hear, because if anybody from the public has...
The chair, the chair could open up public comment if they wish. Mr. Cali, would you like to open up public comment?
Sure. And by open up, you mean say something?
Ask the public if they have comments, sir.
Okay.
Sure, thank you, Doug. Liz Faria on South Road. My, I have no, you know, it looks fine. My understanding is that the addition, the new building is going to be set back a little, right? For the, the addition is going to be set back a little, right? It's not built yet, correct?
No, it's basically right in line with the front of the building. It's in that fenced-in area that already exists.
Okay, but it's, oh, so it's not set back. I thought she had said it was set back a little. I, I don't know about the illuminated, not illuminated. I'm not so in favor of illuminated, but so I think it would be probably good to have it turned off, just because we don't need, you know, lights at night. But my only question would be precedent, because there's a big difference between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty-nine, you know, feet or whatever it is. So that would be my only question. How does this affect precedent? Like, for other people that want to come in for a hundred and seventy-three or a hundred, you know, on their second sign? So that would be my only question. I don't know what the answer to that is, so.
Yes, as we mentioned already, we'd be more than willing to, usually, like I said, an hour after the place closes. I do a lot of work in the petroleum industry. Gas station closes, signs get shut off, and then, like you say, they're on a timer. Obviously, signs are brighter at night, not as bright during the day. They're still illuminated, so we have no problem with the condition on that.
I believe Mr. Stevens might have comment.
Bruce Stevens, South Road. I'm speaking just as a citizen of town. I'm not an attorney. Reagan may have more background. I'm sure he has more background on this than I do. I have asked Glenn Greenwood over the years a number of times about the precedent issue. And he tells me that legally, a decision of any particular board is not setting a precedent. Obviously, it weakens your case going forward if the town allows a lot of, or makes some decisions that conflict with the town laws, because it just appears that you're not, you know, applying the rules and regulations evenly, fairly. Generally speaking, you know, as you've known from other meetings, I've been very much against variances unless they can meet the five criteria, if they go against town regulations. In this particular case, I'm going to speak in support of you issuing a variance tonight for the following reasons. And that was that this is the first sign case that's come before the town that I'm aware of, in terms of the ZBA, in over a decade. So Doug Finnan here, and myself, members of the planning board, and Reagan Elliott, who has been on the ZBA now for a bit, convened with, it's kind of an ad hoc subcommittee with Glenn Greenwood here a couple of weeks ago to talk about our sign ordinance in general. And as you know, the criteria is you're allowed a square foot or a half-square foot of signage area for each lineal foot of the building involved. And so we kind of took a step back and asked, why do we, we asked Glenn, why do we have size requirements in general? And he explained that, you know, basically, we tried to enact rules and regulations that pertain to public safety in this case. And he said, you know, if you have a building, a large building sitting close to the road, and there's a huge sign on it that's distracting to drivers, you know, that's just kind of a truthful, practical statement. But then we kept talking about Brentwood's setback requirements on, you know, commercial zone, and the setback requirement's a hundred and twenty-five feet from edge of pavement before you can start to build anything. So our buildings are not like some of the plastic car lots where you have signage within twenty-five feet of the road. You know, this, this building is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet back from the road. So he felt that the size of the sign is not so much distracting, again, as it would be in a highly concentrated area. So we kept looking at and talking about our sign ordinance, and I think from, not really from memory, but I have an inclination that our signage, total square footage requirements, maximum square footage allowances are probably thirty to forty years old in Brentwood. It was before we had any, some of the larger commercial buildings that we're seeing today, and we sure hope as Brentwood taxpayers that we can get some decent, larger companies coming to Brentwood with larger buildings. So as Glenn's suggestion, without going, he said, if your building's back a hundred and twenty square feet, he said you could make the claim that there really isn't any reason to have a maximum signage, square footage allowance. But, you know, we're Brentwood, and we had a seventy-five square foot, or seventy-five square foot is, or, I'm sorry. You can have a, have a sign equal in square footage to the length of the building, or half the, half the lineal feet of the building constructed. So we felt that, you know, without deviating too far from our regulations, that we should propose a zoning ordinance change. It's not a subdivision or a site plan change, so we, as a planning board, can't enact a change to our square footage at this point. That would have to go before voters at town meeting, and it's too late in the year this year to put this on our zoning ballot. But we could put it on a zoning ballot for twenty-six. And we can actually post our, the board's decision to advance that to a vote at town meeting, you know, as early as the next couple of months. So we kind of asked Glenn to formalize the changes, the proposed changes to the ordinance, and have them ready for a planning board public hearing in May of this year. So at least that would show townspeople and the other boards in town what the intent, or what the thought process was behind making a change to our ordinance. And certainly, if we change from a half-square, or if we allowed a square foot of signage equal to the square, the number of lineal feet of the building, that would obviously, in this case, be far greater than what the applicant's asking for. It just seems more reasonable. So bottom line is, we have a forty-year-old ordinance that pertained to buildings that we were seeing being built forty years ago. Times have changed. We seem to be getting some larger buildings, which we're all in favor of, and we just think we need to update our ordinance to reflect the modern scene, so to speak. So for that reason, even though it's not officially law at this point, you know, the intent is there. And I would, for that reason, support granting the variance that's requested tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and speaking for myself, I I, well, first of all, I consider what's out there, considering it a building, a real stretch. I mean, it does have a front on it. It has a chain link sides, and I'm not sure that it has any kind of roof on it that I've been able to see there. It's just outside storage for building panels and whatever else. It won't fit inside the building, but, but nonetheless, aside from that, if it's going to be a Garden Center, the first question I have is, what are you going to do with all the stuff that's in it in order to have gardening-type things in there? And the second question is, how are, how are you going to secure it? Because parents aren't too bad, but kids are naturally curious in if there's anything out of the ordinary that they don't usually see at home. They're going to go check it out. And I just see it as a potential headache.
Well, I believe, I think it's, it's going to be put there anyway, and it's going to be locked up at night, and we're going to hope that the Brentwood Police Department is going to be driving around town. But I don't think kids are looking to go and get peat moss and, and flowers and other things like that. I don't think we have to worry about any type of vandalism going on there.
Come on, I'm talking about smaller kids with their parents. You take your eyes off them for a minute, and they're gone.
Oh, well, I mean, you know, that's, that's the parents got to watch. I mean, I, you know, that's, they're not going to take anything. It, you know, it's, you go to any, any Garden Center, any place, and you go and buy flowers, and you put them in your front yard. You buy peat moss, you buy grass seed. It's just like everywhere else. You know, in the wintertime, it'll be more seasonal, shovels. I don't know if they have Christmas trees. I'm not sure. But I don't think we have to worry about that type of thing. I mean, they could do the same thing inside the main building. But we have to, you know, kids have to be watched, and that's what parents are for.
Okay, and other than that, I am, both my wife and I are gardeners, so we're not opposed to a Garden Center in Brentwood, within a reasonable drive of the house, so.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just concerned that it be secure and a reasonably tight quality thing. People can't get hurt trying to get in and out of.
No. Let me address a couple of things, if I could, please. As far as the, the security, I know that we do have the fencing, as well as those, that will be locked and secured at night. Additionally, if you look at the type of fencing that we use there, it's not like your typical chain-link fence. It has the, the post, circular post to prevent someone from, from getting hurt, where a typical chain-link fence has the spikes at the top of it, so that should address any of your issues of someone getting hurt and the security. And then the question that you originally asked about, where would we put everything? Anything that is currently out there will be moved, and only the Garden Center or seasonal items that are being sold at that time will be in that area. Great.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Mrs. Stevens, you have another comment?
Okay, so Reagan Elliott, I have...
I couldn't move mine either.
Yeah, just one, one other comment, and that is that the use of the, of the facility is covered by their, their approval, their site plan approval. So the site plan approval approved, you know, the garden uses and the types of products that Tractor Supply sells. Now, it's not a bad question to ask, Doug. I mean, if you're concerned with about certain lawn chemicals, things that could be dangerous, you know, in certain situations, you know, it's a valid question, but that's something that the fire department, not that the planning board, or I don't think the ZBA, you know, has jurisdiction over that. That's really, a fire department can go, and they do go to the site at least once a year, you know, and check to make sure that things like propane, they sell propane there, that, you know, that that's in proper, stored in proper containers, and the same thing would apply to any sort of chemicals that would be dangerous to, to people. There's, there's requirements for how that's handled on-site, and that's the responsibility of the, of the owner, of the, of the business.
I think we're straying away from what they're here for, which is a variance to a sign.
I look at the numbers, and this is a big variance. Now, I don't have a lot of experience here, but this... Now, I don't have a lot of experience here, but this seems more than an adjustment. It seems like we're doing something major to the existing law, which is ordinance, which is so clear, even clear when it leaves out things like directional, doesn't talk about it at all. There's no vagueness here. It's clear. And I'm wondering if we were to approve it, but then it would be a vote later on by the town? But if the town turns it down?
Correct. Townspeople.
The townspeople are the ultimate decider, so to speak, of, you know, of any of these ordinance changes. So they, they could do that. But I think, and it, it would be unfair for me to say that the planning board as a body has, has approved, you know, the changes that we're suggesting. But again, in, in talking to, to our town planner and thinking about how the ordinance came into existence at the time it did, and the fact that we think we're very, being very conservative and very cautious to suggest a, a change to the measurement of allowing not one half square foot per lineal feet of building, but one full square foot of lineal feet per building. That, you know, that's more in keeping, certainly keeping in mind, considering the, the traffic issue, the distraction of drivers, we'd be well within a safe, safe amount there. And it's just an acknowledgement that, you know, in 40 years, things change. And, and so we also, we decided to, in talking about, again, in the subcommittee, we talked about just doing away with directional signs, any language to that. Just saying you can have a total square footage of signage and not label it in any particular way, not directional or anything. Just your total square footage would be based on the length of your building, period. So you know how many square feet you had to work with, how you wanted to break that up in terms of the types of signs or the sizes of the sign. Again, as the, as wall mounted signs, that would be up to the applicant. And, you know, give people plenty of discretion, plenty of decision-making, based on their particular business needs, how they would go about it. We would just thought, again, we get to a more of a realistic allowance for size of signs based on modern day 2025. I think we put this in around 1985, the original ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Can, can I still comment?
Sure.
All right, so I've been doing signage for over 30 years. So I've seen a lot of towns, been to a lot of places. And a lot of times directional signs do not even come into the picture as far as your enter exit and all that stuff. They normally, like as he just mentioned, people are allowed one square foot per lineal foot of a building. So the size of sign that we're proposing is not out of character for a normal town bylaw. So I just wanted to add that.
A clarification, so we're not talking about.
Oh, God, help me.
What? When, we're not talking about the number of signs, that we're talking about the size.
Oh, yeah.
But how may, are we going to also look at the number of signs? We have an ordinance.
So I didn't know who you knew, you know what I mean? Like who was the guy that? Carolyn, we can hear your back noise. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's fine. Doug Finnin, go vote. In reference to the sign ordinance itself, it's, it's obviously antiquated. We haven't had this issue before, before it came to, to our attention through the ZBA on this last request. But it needs the attention, given the fact that we've spent some time with Glenn to allow upcoming businesses, hopefully, as well as existing businesses in town, to benefit from signage restricted, as you said, directional. All those things were taken into consideration. We're moving forward, as Bruce said, to bring that forward to the town. There's no way to anticipate what they'll vote one way or another. But regardless if they do or don't accept the ordinance, the issue before you now is the fact that this business is, this business is asking for a special exception or an exception. I don't think it's out of line, what they're asking for, especially given the age of our ordinance. And every, every applicant that comes before you is looked at independently. So you, you're not really setting a precedence except for this particular business. And with that, I, along with Bruce and the guidance of Glenn, don't feel it's unreasonable what they're asking for at this time. Thank you.
I, and I have to agree. I don't, I, I would vote yes on this. I, I don't think it's unreasonable what you're asking for. I just was concerned about the future. And I like, I like clarity. And so, but we can get that, that's what you're saying. So, um, thank you.
Now, what we have to decide of here is, we're the one, one of the boards, a few boards in the organization that's allowed to make exceptions under special circumstances. Ones that people who wrote the original, whatever it was, had no way of foreseeing. Just something to keep in mind. So I, have we?
We haven't touched the five criteria yet. I suggest we start at number one and work our way down through, please.
Okay, so the first question is, would it be contrary to the public interest to grant the variance?
I would say it is not contrary to the public interest.
What?
No, this is the board talking amongst ourselves here.
I, 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 I agree with that because I went by it and I saw it and I completely agree.
Okay, and I agree. Imagine that.
Because we need to answer that question.
There's been no factual or credible evidence presented that would lead me, speaking for myself and then hopefully for the board, to think that this would be against or contrary to the public interest.
Yeah, and even I, I believe if you narrow it down to public safety, it's far enough away from the road where I don't see it a distraction.
And I think it's fit with other buildings that have multiple signs on them. So although it's only a single-use building, there are other buildings in town that have multiple signs on them that are set back from the road. So that's why I say it's not contrary.
Okay.
Okay, hold on.
Okay. Next question is, the spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed because? Now, so the spirit of the ordinance is to limit the clutter, as I understand it, the clutter and distraction of multiple gaudy, moving, in poor taste signs on a highly trafficked area of town. And don't bring any credit at all to the rural character of the town, which we spend a lot of time talking about in other boards and in other venues. So I, I firmly, I personally firmly believe that it does uphold the spirit of the ordinance and still keeps the public good. And, and it's, that the project is a, ultimately a benefit to the town.
And I think there's like a crossover here between one and two. So I absolutely agree with you that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
I also agree that the spirit of ordinance would be observed. I believe it's not overpowering for a sign. And if one of the conditions was to remove all the banner signs off of the fencing, I think this would actually be a reduction in signage on the garden center itself.
Okay. And then the next question is, we didn't do three yet, did we?
No, sir.
Okay, the next one is, this would or would not do substantial justice because? Well, I, I for one consider Tractor Supply to be an asset to the town and a real convenience for us people that live up around here. Because look at where you got to go, time-wise. You get some of the very simple things that they have there that are priced affordably. And I, I won't say where, but for my older tractor, I needed a radiator cap. Tractor Supply didn't have one. So I, I went to a place that was originally a franchise dealer for this unit and I paid $40 for a radiator cap. Now, if you ever had a reason to go out and buy one, how did it happen to me? Apparently I stupidly left it off or it fell off, who knows? But it was a real shock. They, they sell for on a, on a big day, a large and expensive vehicle, $10 to $12. So, and no matter what you need, whether you need ducklings for your kids to chase around the yard or whether you need some plants for your wife or, you know, whatever, I can generally find pretty much anything I need or anything I need to do what I think I ought to be doing. So that's my reason for that. Anything that?
I, I don't really.
That would do substantial justice.
Yeah, substantial justice. I, I'm not sure I really understand what that means in this case. Justice to the people, justice to the applicant?
Extremely valid question. I'm, I'm glad that you asked that. I mean, that's inspiring because that's the heart of the matter right there.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I.
And I think you should talk about it together and, and explore that.
So I believe that substantial justice would, with this is, would be a substantial justice. I believe that this town needs more national tenants. This, this sign allows a national tenant actually have people know where some of their products are. And we all have been to Tractor Supply, I'm sure. And there's a main door, but this is a new type of their business. So I think that having this sign granted would allow them to flourish that type of their business that they're investing money into.
And so I, when I looked at this, I'm good with it because I'm going to say it wouldn't not. It wouldn't disturb substantial justice. So there's no reason to have any problem with it. Even if I don't know what substantial justice is, I figure I know that this is not going to be a problem.
Okay, I think that's as sure a way as we can put it.
So just give me, just give me one second. So for that one, I, I gathered this. And if you all agree with it, then great. The sign is a much-needed directional sign for better serving the traffic flow of the establishment.
Just get nervous, Mark, about using the word directional sign when it's not something that is allowed.
Right, so, so that's completely understandable. So we, we'll start, we'll start over with that. It's hard from, I'm, I'm, I'm grasping. Help me grab the essence of why you, you think substantial justice. Because I can't put in, they sell cheap stuff.
They sell cheap stuff.
Or I can't. You, you gotta help me out.
I, I think you have a business that is opening up a new, new direction in their business. And this signage allows them to expand that use and have customers be able to know where that new, new use is going to be on the property. Without saying directional.
Okay, so the new, the new sign. I, I, you said directional, but I was saying directional. I just want you to know that. The, the new sign.
Allows an existing business to expand its products being offered.
About its ability to serve the customer public.
Yeah, expands the market.
Expand its products being offered.
Doctor said.
I didn't catch what he said. I was scribbling.
Okay, I, I said. You know.
What makes the mar, it will expand the market because it's going to be so much, it's going to be a story. You go in and, you know, get great things.
I think I'll just put a period.
Yeah, just put a period.
There you go. Yeah, moving on.
We're not searching for words tonight.
Mm-hmm, no. I just want to make sure that we capture
Yes.
something reasonable.
I think we just need to stay away from the word directional where it's, a directional sign is not allowed.
You do you, my friend. You got it.
That's the way I feel.
Yeah, it's cool.
Okay.
Number four.
For the following reasons now. The values of the surrounded properties that would or would not be diminished. Well, and bluntly, there ain't nobody else there.
Yes.
Not, not within, not within hailing distance, not within sight distance.
I think the only one that's going to see it, Doug, is, is the daycare across the road. And they may, may like the thought that there's a garden center over there.
I bet if they threw in a free tour when they have the little ducklings and chicks there and everything.
There you go.
So, so far I have no, the value will not be affected.
Correct.
The only fact I have upon which to come up with an answer here is what Doug said. There's nothing around there for it to have much of an impact.
Well.
I don't think.
Those stumps may feel that they're being outshone now.
That's tough.
I agree that the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. I, I think the building is far enough back from the road that the signage that is being proposed is not going to be obstructionist and it won't affect anybody else in the town of Brentwood.
Absolutely. Now, number five, unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because? No, that's a good question. I don't.
Carolyn does in your packet have her explanations for this as well, if you want to read them. Maybe you agree with them, maybe that you don't, but they're there for your use.
Yeah, I, what does this say?
So, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I'll read that into the record. Number one, so, so number one is, no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision in the specific application that provisions to the property. And then number two is about the proposed use. It says, proposed use, Tractor Supply Company is a reasonable one in the commercial zone, subject variance, the addition of one wall sign, owing 61.46, 46 square feet, does not conflict with the general public purposes of the zoning ordinance, and continues to permit a reasonable use, i.e. American supply, chain selling a variety of products for the home improvement, lawn, garden, and agriculture. Granting other requested variances poses no adverse impact to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community.
I could write faster than that.
I certainly can use that, in its entirety.
Yeah.
If you all agree with it, I certainly can use it.
I think it, that is well-drafted language that probably we could use for those two items.
Absolutely.
We've completed the five criteria. So typically, at this point, someone would make a motion to either approve or deny, and then we can go over conditions.
I make a motion to approve the two variances that are in front of us tonight, which is section 403, 04, 04, and section 403, 03, 01, to allow a second wall-mounted sign with a total square footage of 61.46 square feet.
And we have a second?
Oh, that's right, that was my job. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and second, do we need any more discussion on the motion in the second?
Do you want to go over the conditions? Do you have any conditions?
Yes.
I have them written down as you kind of went along. Would you like me to read them?
I would appreciate that.
No signage on fencing, on chain link fencing. New sign shall be, shall be not backlit after 9:00 PM till dawn.
I would rather say it should not be illuminated during non-operational times.
Shall not be illuminated... on non-operational times.
And so that it get captured, just like I had on our first motion. I want to make sure that any, any storage of fertilizers, pesticides, or chemicals that are kept in the Garden Center are documented and submitted to the fire department, so that they understand where those, those will be kept outside, so that they're in a safe spot, and the fire department can find them in the event of an emergency. Because as we spoke last time, this is the only board that this sign is going to go in front of, and this is the only board that's going to see the changing of this Garden Center into possibly holding those kind of chemicals outside. So I think it, in my opinion, if we're the only ones that are going to see this, we need to make sure that the fire department gets a plan, that they know where those, those products are going to be stored.
They are required to submit a plan to the fire, that, you know, there's OSHA requirements to, to all of that.
Yep.
You can, I mean, the ZBA can make any condition that they wish.
Sounds like we did.
Okay.
So that, that's in the form of a motion, and a second.
Second.
And I want to ask if anybody, is anybody opposed to this? None of us, so... It's a done deal.
I didn't see a vote to the affirmative.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
All, all in favor?
Motion carries.
None opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me before we go? I guess not.
All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Did you say we had more business?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Meeting minutes are in your pocket.
So the next issue on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 27.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of 1:27 as written.
Aye.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have any other business that needs to come before us this evening?
Nothing I'm aware.
And we have nothing to go non-public over? No, nothing? Then a motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
Motion, or move, no, make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, good job.
Thank you. I'll be much better next time.
I second the motion.
And moved and signed, and all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. You know it will be.